Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our June 25, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first item on our agenda is please stand and join me for the pledge of grace.
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item on our agenda is the agenda review. Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Chair, there is one addition to the agenda today. That is the addition of a resolution on the settlement of the Spohle Letter versus a state. And so we'll add that under administration.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve with the addition.
Second. We got a motion and a second for the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Our next item, we're moving into the Economic Development Authority meetings. We will need to recess this meeting. Motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Nancy, please come join us. So we will call our Economic Development Authority meeting for June 25, 2024 to order. Mr. Meyer, agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
You have a motion for the agenda?
Some of.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Minutes from April 23.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And good morning. We will be talking about the Partnership for Community Land Trusts. If you just please introduce yourselves and we will get moving forward. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Bulkmann with the Mankato and Blue Earth County EDAs staff supporting the discussion.
Jen Thienemann, partner, sorry, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership on behalf of PCLT.
Thank you.
And we're here today to talk about Partnership Community Land Trust. And Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership has established that land trust in our region since 2008. And they continue to lease and own land across southwest Minnesota. And the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership did expand the community land trust to Mankato and Blue Earth County in 2022 in response to a significant need for affordable homeownership in the Mankato area, which limits the ability for existing and prospective low income, low and moderate income families to purchase homes in our community. They currently have done three, they're in the process of doing three phases with the city of Mankato right now. The first phase was for three acquisition homes. Two, the second phase was for three new construction homes. So there's six of them in the works right now where they have families that are working on purchasing those homes. And then last month, they did start phase three where they will have five acquisition homes and two new construction homes. And they're coming now to both the city and the county to ask for support for a phase four of that project, which they hope to submit the application here on July 11. And for this fourth phase, they're looking at prioritizing the creation of 10 new construction homes. And so they are coming to both the city and the county to have them consider each providing $250,000 to support the community land trust with those 10 homes. And we have discussed that in the past, that the possibility of funding for that phase would come through the statewide affordable housing aid, which we're looking at creating a housing trust fund for. So they would be asking us to consider that housing trust fund dollars to support these homes if they get awarded funding. So we're requesting your consideration of that. And if you approve, we'd like to have resolution approved to support the project that would go in with the application on the 11.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this point?
No, we've heard it before.
Yeah, we had a quick discussion a week or so ago and you were both there and had to give us all the information we needed on it.
It's a good program. I'll move.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your help and appreciate the effort. At this time, that concludes our business. The EBA would I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will move on to the agenda item planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a few moments. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute timeout. The administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when your use time is a lot of times. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under the consideration of the board. At this time, that's the planning and zoning staff to introduce themselves and we will start with PC 10-24, final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Consonant, County Zoning Administrator. PC 10-24 is a request for a review and approval from Kristen and Joe Friedrichs for the final plat of Friedrichs Farms, replat of Otters Platte number 17 to create one lot and one outlot. The property is zoned rural residence and includes part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter and part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, all lying in section 23 of South Bend, or Vernon Center Township. At the planning commission staff presented the report. The applicants were not present and there was no comment from the public. Members of the planning commission had no questions, concerns, or comments. And following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning on this item will be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for PC 10-24 for the final plat. Anyone from the public, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the Anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-24, the final plat? And for the third time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 10-24, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion at the county board level? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Now we'll hear PC 11-24 interim use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 11-24 is a request for review and approval from Darren Kaiser Sat for an after-the-fact interim use permit to operate a motorcycle repair business as a level-two home occupation. The applicant also intends to offer occasional meditation classes. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the south half of the southeast quarter of section nine in De Coria Township. The site address is 18556 State Highway 22, Mankato, Minnesota. At the planning commission, staff presented the staff report. The applicants were present and available to answer questions from the planning commission. There was no comment from the public and members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns or comments. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Anyone from the public, I will open up the public comment. Anybody from the public like to comment on PC 11-24, the interim use permit, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 11-24? Last time, for anyone wishing to comment on PC 11-24, the interim use permit, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? This one here was pretty straightforward at the meeting, but it was kind of an interesting mix of businesses, we thought. So good for him. I mean, it looks like it's going to be a good program for him and seems excited to get started, so. If there's no other comments, I would ask all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is PC 12-24.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott Salisbury, land use planner. PC 12-24 is an application by David and Amy Orkut and William Grubner. The request is review for the approval of the preliminary plat of Fair Acres, which is a two-lot subdivision. The property is currently lot three of Otters Platte 87 and is located in the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section 19, and the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter of section 20, Jamestown Township. The property is zoned rural residence and is in the shoreline of Lake Washington, which is a recreational development lake. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available to answer any questions and there was no comments from the public. Members of the planning commission had no questions, comments, or concerns either. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning is a passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-24, the preliminary plat hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-24? Last time, for anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-24, the preliminary plat hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move the second motion.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. PC 13-24.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 13-24 is a request for review and approval from Derek and Sarah Olson for an interim use permit for an elder care dwelling. The property is zoned agricultural and includes lot one, block one of the SACE subdivision number three, located in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 31, Luray Township. The site address is 19978 State Highway 83, Mankato, Minnesota. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report and the applicants were present and available to answer any questions from the planning commission. There was no comment from the public. Members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns or comments. And following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, I will open up the public comment for 13-24, the interim use for elderly care. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 13-24? Last time, for anyone wishing to comment on PC 13-24, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I will close the public portion of this hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? The only thing I will add, I appreciate the staff's time getting this ordinance passed several years ago already. We have done several of these. I think it's a nice amenity to have here in Blue Earth County. We can keep people in their, in their homes and toast to their family much longer than in the past, so we appreciate that. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We'll move on to item number PC 14-24.
Yeah, PC 14-24 is an application by Kelsey and Jason Anderson. Request is for a review and approval of an interim use permit to operate an event center in a conservation zone district in Luray, excuse me, Lyra Township. The property is located at 15849 557th Lane, Good Thunder, Minnesota, and is described as lots 29 through 32 of Culver and Farrington subdivision, which is in the southeast quarter of section three, Lyra Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available to answer any questions from the planning commission. The planning commission had no questions, concerns, or comment, and there's no comment from the public either. Following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I will open up the public comment portion for PC 14-24 for interim use permit hearing. If there's anyone like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 14-24, please come to the podium. And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 14-24, the interim use permit hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We'll, we'll hear PC 15-24.
Yeah, PC 15-24 is an application by Verizon Wireless and Banco Electric Cooperative. It's for a conditional use permit for a 199-foot wireless communications tower. The property is located in the agriculture and urban fringe overlay district in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 21, South Bend Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. A representative of the applicant summarized the status of the project for the planning commission and there is no comment from the public. Members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns or comments on the proposal. Following the brief discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is a passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Scott. All right, I will open up the public comment for 15-24. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 15-24, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 15-24? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 15-24, conditional use permit hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. All right, thank you. We'll move on to PC 16-24.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 16-24 is an application for Blue Earth County for a request and review and approval of an amendment to chapter 24 zoning to add definitions and standards for non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, and non-conforming property. Proposed amendment will update section 24-3, the definitions and word usage section, section 24-307, the development of non-performing lot of record, and then also update section 24-309, non-conformities of the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. There was no comment from the public and members of the planning commission had no questions or concerns. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings recommended by staff. And the board action this morning, we passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for PC 16-24, an ordinance amendment for Blue Earth County. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Second time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 16-24? And final time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 16-24, ordinance amendment for the Blue Earth County, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
I'll move amendment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? I would just add that this is just some of our housekeeping stuff and trying to finalize and tighten up our ordinances. And I think the ones we've done so far have been working fairly well, so I appreciate the efforts we're doing, trying to get that stuff updated. All right, I got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great afternoon. All right, this time we'll move into some drainage issues. Lot less drainage this week than, or this time around than last time around.
Yep, yep, a lot later. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
Just got two items for the agenda today. I'll start with judicial ditch 15, we're setting a hearing date for repair. Judicial ditch 15 was first established in 1917 and is primarily located in Lincoln Township. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority is the drainage authority presiding over these judicial ditch 15 proceedings for proposed repairs. On May 1st, 2023, a petition for improvement was received for judicial ditch 15. On June 6, 2023, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG to prepare a preliminary survey report for the proposed improvement to portions of judicial ditch 15. On February 28, 2024, Mr. Brandl submitted the preliminary survey report to the property environmental resources department. As part of the preliminary survey report for the proposed improvement petition, portions of judicial ditch 15 drainage system were identified to need repairs. A separate repair report was developed and submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on May 29, 2024. An informational meeting was held on May 3 of 2024 discussing both the proposed improvement and repair options for judicial ditch 15. Today I'm asked, at today's meeting, we are asking the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority to approve the draft findings in order, setting the repair hearing of judicial ditch 15 for July 30, 2024 at 9:00 AM.
All right, you've heard the requests.
I'll move.
Second.
You got a motion and a second to set the hearing for June 25 of 2024 for JV 15. Is there any discussion?
Or July, excuse me.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, July, yeah.
July 30th, yep.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, item number two, last item. County ditch 24, we're awarding a, some quote for repair work. Quotes were solicited from multiple contractors for repair work for portions of county ditch 25, specifically branch three and the main line. Two new borians are needed as repairs involve Blue Earth County Highway 90. Drainage staff along with ISG engineering staff have worked with Blue Earth County Public Works Department to develop a plan for the proposed boring repairs. On May 24, 2024, two quotes were submitted for the proposed repairs. The two quotes submitted are included in the table below with the low quote coming from Newman Excavating LLC with a quote of $99,134.08 and the highest quote coming from Selly Excavating at $160,284.85. ISG and Blue Earth County Drainage have worked with Newman Excavating LLC on past projects with very positive results. ISG recommends awarding the bid to Newman Excavating LLC. Requested action for today, we are asking the county ditch 25 authority to award the bid to Newman Excavating LLC in the amount of $99,134.08 for the boring repairs.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Got a motion to approve bid.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bid for $99,134.08. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Phil, good morning. How are you today?
How are you doing? Well, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see everybody, yeah. Seems like I have a lot of things with me for living right next door over there.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have three action items for your attention today and a couple of informational discussion items. Jumping into the action items, Mr. Chair, financial assistance. We have a contract with Open Door that we've had through the COVID process and what we have referred to as the unwinding efforts to get people back on healthcare using the old rules, not the COVID rules. Open Door provides a navigator for us, so we work in concert with them and this staff person. And the navigator really has the job of trying to help people fill out the forms, which is a big issue. They can be very complex. And so the goal of having this person in place is that we have more timely responses with applications and then our financial workers are the ones that determine eligibility. And we're not allowed to help them with those applications, so this third party really helps. And so we've had a good partnership with Open Door. The original contract was for one year and the contract I'm bringing before you today is from July 1 of '24 through June 30 of '25 with not-to-exceed language at $130,200. And that will be fully covered by state funding, which was allotted to us based on this unwinding process. The second item, children's mental health. The name of the corporation is Hello World. They provide parent coaching and education, really working through parent-child conflicts, challenges, focusing on healthy communications and kind of tools to make sure things go right within households. It is on a one-to-one basis. It is not therapy, but they can also bring in a therapist if they need it. So that is the model. The difference, we do have some of these services through early childhood, but then at the end of the paragraph, you'll see this is for older children and adolescents. The rates for individual session are $150 an hour and $200 an hour for in-home family, which is comparable to some other services like this that are provided. The language for the amount is not to exceed $24,995 each calendar year and the term June 1 of '24 through December 31 of '25. And then finally, some appointments. And we have two different committees that are adding volunteers. The first, Human Service Advisory Committee, Helena Camacho, District 4, Christina Hogan, District 3. And then Social Service Task Force, Deidre Cram-Ziegler, District 1, Linda Othout, District 4, Lon Simmons, District 1, and Sean Uzna, District 5. So those are the people I've been before you to serve on our committees. We're very appreciative of their willingness to help and those are my action items for today.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the items before us? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Couple of informational items. I will say, you'll see some of our data issues show up here that it's sometimes hard for us to have really linear data provided to us either by the state or a combination of our own data and the state's data. The first chart is that, under disability services. I brought this to your attention before because it is what we have available to us from the state. And you'll see the categories in the box. I'd probably draw the board's attention to the total of all assessments as, as a comparative one year over the next, and it has been pretty stable as far as our assessments we provide to folks with disability under 65. I will go through some of the added pieces here. You'll see the notes that there are some limitations. And really, the big issue is that second to last box where it says legacy assessments usually are public health assessments, so they get pushed into this. The next chart really breaks down our version of this, but I will say to the board, it got really complicated this year, so I'll try to sort through without going into too much detail. If you want more detail, I can give it to you. But you'll see the first number, the initial assessments went up by 41. That, that is an important one to look at. The next one is our reassessments that we do, and that actually went down by 45, so there's kind of a wash there. The next two categories, what that represents is a split out where we have both our assessors and our case managers completing. and our case managers completing some of the reassessments. And so there's two categories and that started mid-year, so it gets kind of messy. But the bottom line is the six-eighteen number is the right number to compare it to the previous year. And it is slightly lower than it was. Then you'll see the abandoned assessments where we start an assessment and the person doesn't follow through. And so the total, though, kind of again washes through, it is down by fifty-four year over year. But nothing that we feel is more than just your normal skew of people coming and going on and off of our roles. And I think that's really all I had. I will pause though, just to see if anybody has any questions. What we try to do is provide the board a snapshot of volume that we're dealing with and it's high volume, it definitely is. But it is, there's a lot of technical pieces to it, who does what and bounces around a bit.
Thank you very much.
So, so Phil, are these the assessments that have increased in time?
Yes.
Quite a bit?
Yes.
Was that before twenty?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so this is a true picture of a flat, of a
It is.
of a comparison of what it always has been for the last four years.
Yeah, I think that's fair, Commissioner. I, yeah, that one, just for me personally, it's hard just because again, like as a psychologist, you can have somebody come in and diagnose them and for sure, a two-hour session, that's probably including the paperwork. And this takes ten hours. And the hard thing, just because, I mean, my parents are certainly in this chapter too, where it changes all the time. There's condition. And so, you know, you take a snapshot again, it takes ten hours to complete it. And then a week later, it could be quite a different story again. And we can reassess, there's no problem with that, but it's just such an involved process with that long assessment that you talk about. So I've always been suspect about that being a wise way to approach it. So, and this session, there was a lot of talk about how often do we have to do the reassessments and other things. But I don't want to say that if things change for individuals, we can't go back and reassess it. It just is a cumbersome, long process.
So is the reassessment process almost as bad as the initial?
I don't think it is quite as bad, but I think it's still hours long. So it's not the full ten hours that I think the initial assessment takes, but I think, I think I've heard seven or something like that. So, you know, it's a little bit shorter.
I would imagine it depends on the condition.
If things change, sure, sure.
If it's a one-point thing, lost some housing, that's might be, but if it's another issue that rolls into other things and changes the whole entire assessment.
That would be like a new assessment. Yeah, I think you're exactly right, right.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's very difficult to go through all that stuff, but at the end of the day, if it's
Right, it's very important. I mean, it's like, it's not that we don't care about our loved one, it's just, yeah, it's, you want to be able to do it kind of fluidly. And there's a lot of domains of life to cover. I don't minimize that. It's just a process that we have right now that, I think it does work. And part of our moving people around is to have our assessors do the assessments and try to carve that out so they get more efficient at it rather than having everybody do all the assessments.
Sure.
So we're trying to specialize, if you will. And so that was the move we made and I think it's a good one. The board supported another supervisor, so Erin Keeman, who has been with us for quite a while, is a worker, financial worker in disability services and now supervisor with, and that's really helped a ton. Move on, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yep. To public health. And this is again, a bit of a flyover. If you want me to drill into anything, please let me know. Starting with child and teen checkup. You'll see the first box is about outreach letters that we send. There's both an introduction letter and a reminder letter and then actual outreach that we do for individuals are also represented in a graph using two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-three data. The big shift here, there's obviously a change that happened from twenty-two to twenty-three, is regarding Mankato Clinic. And there also is some effect from unwinding and who is eligible and who remains eligible. So there's a couple of moving pieces. The Mankato Clinic is willing to do their own, is why there's such a big drop. And, you know, I think we have mixed feelings about that. It's good in the volume problems that we have in public health, trying to cover all the bases. And we appreciate them partnering with us, but then you also split how those checkups are done and the quality of them. And so it's going to be hard for us to control the full picture when you have more players involved. Backup, just that the checkup is a battery of things that they're needing to do, like a checklist. And it is for children zero to twenty-one who are on medical assistance. And so we kind of track that, make sure docs are covering the bases and there is then payment for that when they complete all the components of a child and teen checkup. So, yeah, I think the data will stabilize over some time, but we've kind of rebooted everything. The next one.
Just, yes, real quick, Phil, you know, I'll encourage your staff. I know it's a new, new process. But to be open-minded and, you know, hopefully it can be more efficient. And to try to get our counts down a little bit is very helpful to us
Yes, right.
on our end. But I can relate to giving up some responsibilities.
Right.
It's hard to do.
Yep.
So I would just encourage your staff and people to keep an open mind and
I appreciate that.
really try to
Right.
work through the process. I think we have a good partner.
Yep.
They do a good job up there.
I agree.
Understand the communication connection, but with technology and the other sources we have, I think we can still have really good program.
Right. And we have heard the growth issues that we keep getting bigger and bigger, more staff. And so this is a way to cut that back. And so, like I say, it's a mixed bag where I think staff feels some relief too. I'll be honest, so I don't think they're opposed to what you're saying. But yeah, it takes some getting used to it. It's hard to let go of something that you've owned or taken personal responsibility and that's right. So, thank you.
Probably, probably harder on the ones that have been around a while.
Correct.
The younger, the newer ones are probably more apt
You're right.
adapt.
Roll with the change.
Us people that have been around a while aren't willing to give things up as easily.
I think that's very true.
Speaking from my own perspective.
Mine too. Mine too. I appreciate that, Commissioner, very much. The WIC data, again, our WIC program focuses on nutrition, identified through pregnant women, new moms, breastfeeding moms and children under the age of five. This is where families qualifying do get food packages on a WIC card and can go to the grocery store and buy healthy food. You'll see that our numbers have through COVID declined and we're very proud of that. I think stayed connected. All of these were virtually done through at least May of twenty-three and as far as August is when we had the full turnover back to face-to-face. And we do think that's better quality. So that, that process has happened. And as you all can imagine, there's a lot involved in trying to get the flow of the river. I guess that's a bad analogy right now. But to have a change over time, we have to be patient, as suggested by the Commissioner. WIC enrollment overall has increased over the past two years. Staff feel they're doing well in retaining and accepting new participants. I would say to the board that even though this is a medical assistance, you know, kind of low-income service and program that we run, there are special circumstances. So if you're aware that somebody has a child that has special needs and one of the spouses then can't work, even though their income and their assets might be really high, we can look at that and see if there aren't some mitigating circumstances where they could still qualify for this assistance during that transition period where maybe they're out of work or something like that. So I just wanted to throw that in there, just so that if you do hear circumstances, it would be wise for them to at least reach out and see how they sit as far as qualifying for the program. And then there is a macro goal to prepare obviously these young kids and their families for school. And so there's a focus on that as well as getting them what they need as far as health and wellbeing before school starts at age five. First steps, I am very pleased and thank you to Commissioner O'Connor and others who have acknowledged this video we put out for first steps. And Commissioner Brunder, when you were talking about staff, you know, adjusting, I think this is part of that partnership with Mayo and Mankato Clinic is actually where we're located, but it does tip over to Mayo as well. So they are good partners. I agree with you. And this first steps program is for prenatal, so before birth, after birth, postpartum, women and children to support, again, healthy births and outcomes. And we try to do, one goal that you'll see in the chart is we try to get in as early as possible. And you'll even see in twenty-twenty-two, that number went up, which is what we want. And then it went back down through what we were going through in twenty-three with, I think, COVID-related issues. You'll see in the second trimester, there's a bump up, so we did catch folks, but it was just a little later in the game. And so that shift is probably not what we want, but we're very pleased that we didn't lose them altogether. So, and then the rest of the numbers in third trimester and on are pretty stable and flat. The video that we sent out is there, if you want to share that with anyone. I, I think it's just a really powerful way to capture what we do. Sometimes it's really hard for me when I'm not in the trench trying to describe what I think we do and to have the people actually doing it, you know, tell stories and talk about real people who have benefited and the people themselves commenting on that, really a good thing. I do want to say that what we do, so when we intervene and find a family that might have some vulnerability, we look at single and teen parents, mental health issues. And this is either or, it doesn't have to be all these, limited income, unemployment, past chemical use, housing issues, culture and language barriers, and if they just have limited support, if they're feeling isolated or alone. Those are all examples of where we try to help. Eighty percent of the patients we served were pregnant, so that's our, again, goal to try to get in early. And I commented on the fact that we're trying to get in as early as possible. It was interesting that staff said that one of the drops is when there's a changeover in staff, like at the clinics. So the midwives and other people that know the program refer really fluidly and really well. If that person leaves, the new person might not know exactly what it is and they don't advocate as strong as the past person. So much like you were saying, again, the difference between a new person and a person that's been around the block, there's some just different institutional knowledge that they have. So I think that's a factor we deal with as well. Excuse me. One last one that was captured by the video that staff shared with me is just seven patients in twenty-twenty-two are now working in either healthcare or social services and eleven patients from twenty-twenty-three are also working in healthcare or social services. So it's just great. I mean, it's just, to me, that's, that's what we do. That's the best part of a full story. Moving right along the last couple areas. Min Choices is in fact what I mentioned earlier in Lynette's data where I said approximately five hundred of the folks are actually older than sixty-five, so not in the disability service arena, but in the public health arena, and they do those assessments. So that's us doing five hundred assessments for folks over sixty-five. And then you'll see the managed care programs. And at the bottom of the chart, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, I will say the drop, the dramatic drop of forty-six for us, which is unusual, we usually grow, was about the school assistants in Notre Dame when they shut down their assisted living. So they, those people moved. And I think you'll see, as we look at the numbers even in twenty-three, that those, a lot of those folks stayed in the community and just went elsewhere. And so we'll pick them back up again. But, you know, it's kind of nice to have the data tell the story and match what we experienced. Last comment on that is there's a wide range of volume, but in twenty-twenty-four already, we've had a week where we've had one new enrollment in the managed care area and another week where we had seventeen new enrollments. So the volatility, I think child protection is the one that has the most volatility where they'll go and kind of empty out their ranks and have a little lull and then just get hit with a big wave. And I think in that area, it's just so hard to kind of deal with that because we don't, you can't staff for that, you know, the up and down. So that's what I have for you all today. I appreciate your support and listening to our stories.
Any questions or comments for Phil?
Good report.
I would just like to comment on the work session the other day, Angie and Shane were
Yeah.
I thought they did a really good job.
Really good, thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate that at county board level, that they're trying to find better ways to do it.
Absolutely.
You guys have always done that and it's always difficult, but now we're going to be pressing even harder more for that, so.
Well, and to you all too, with the support of the different staff, but like Shane being there, you know, she does represent that kind of generational thing, me being the old buck now. But Angie being in the middle somewhere and then Shane being a newer person. But yeah, there's some vitality in that, that they are, you know, willing to be creative and think differently. And so I, it's good to see that and I really appreciate you giving them time to tell their story in that regard too, for child support.
Yep. All right, well, they did a great job. Tell your staff thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. For Phil, all right. Thank you, Phil. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You too. All righty. Let me just pull through the rest of this quick. I guess it's relatively early, but unless someone wants to take a quick break. All right, we will move right into administration then. Mr. Meyer.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May twenty-eighth.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll read the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Are there any questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, tab eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. We have, do have one action item for the board's consideration today. And this is authorization to initiate recruitment for an office coordinator in human services. This is a byproduct of a supervisory position that worked in kind of the IT area within human services. When that position was vacated, it has not been refilled. They've done some reorganization and I think we'll end up leaving that position vacant. But they have identified some tasks that need to be completed, kind of primarily around timesheets and chasing down some of that information that's necessary for state reporting. And so they would like to reconfigure a role to create a promotional opportunity without a backfill. So it would not create, you know, a new FTE, but rather a new grade for an FTE that would create a promotional opportunity so we can accomplish some of those tasks. So we're bringing that forward today for the board's consideration.
All right, thank you, Bob. Any questions or comments? Others entertain a motion.
On the night.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Under informational items then, we do have an appraiser that is reverting back to their previous position after testing it out, I guess I'd say, and finding that the fit wasn't good. So we appreciate that employee recognizing that early on and reverting back as permitted under their collective bargaining agreement. And so with that move, we've initiated recruitment to fill the appraiser position again. We also had a resignation of a part-time correctional officer in the jail, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. And then we had a promotion of a clerical specialist, three to office coordinator in our community corrections department. And then lastly, a transfer of a senior account clerk in our finance and license centers, kind of a split role to just that senior account clerk payables position in our finance department. And so be happy to answer any questions on any of those informational items.
Any questions?
And then tab nine is an off-site gambling application from the Wasika Hockey Association. They would like to hold an event in August at Indian Island Winery. And so recommending approval of this application today.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the off-site gambling. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab ten is an application for an exempt gambling permit from the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, the Bend of the River Chapter. They too would like to hold an event this time out at the Welcome Complex down in Garden City. They're early, but they're requesting this in October, I believe. So we appreciate them getting ahead of things.
Second.
Got a motion for the exemption gambling permit. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All opposed, motion carries.
Tab eleven is a joint powers agreement for the Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This is an agreement with the county attorney's office to provide those services to protect children, and working with the state BCA and other organizations, and so, again, recommending approval here today.
Second.
You get it first?
I'll first it.
Okay, first, you got it first.
Oh, I thought you said you moved.
All right. Got a motion and a second for the Crimes Against Children Joint Powers Agreement, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then the addition of the settlement, I may be ask Deputy County Administrator Milo to come forward and share a little more information. He handled this yesterday while I was out at the dam.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the resolution for us is really as a result after the U.S. Supreme Court decision of Tyler versus Hennepin, it really declared that the process for tax forfeiture in Minnesota was unconstitutional. When that occurred, there was several lawsuits that were filed. One of those lawsuits was a sporletter versus state, and in that lawsuit against the state, Blueworth County and a Blueworth County official were named in that class action suit. And as part of this process, there was a negotiation that occurred and an agreement that happened in February twenty-four that would settle the Tyler, De Mars, and sporletter cases and all related matters. And so really, what this resolution is doing is opting into that settlement agreement. If we were to choose not to opt into the settlement agreement, and then those claims could come back to the county individually, and so this is really that way to make sure that we don't have any liability outside of these negotiated claims. So as a result, I'm just respectfully asking the county board to approve this, this resolution to accept the terms of this agreement.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the end of my agenda. You have anything else?
Just reports from Commissioners.
All right, you don't have any other thing else? Patty, I think I'll start with you.
All right, after our last board meeting, on June eleventh, I attended the neighborhood meeting with the city of Mankato at Earl and Sum Park. On the twelfth, I had Region Nine. On the thirteenth, the AMC district meeting. The seventeenth, the meeting with Congressional Congressman Finstead. The eighteenth, a work session. June twentieth, I had my fullest day of TDS, RAC, and the townships, and then, yes, on the twenty-fourth, yesterday, the emergency board meeting for the dam. That ends my report.
Thank you, Patty. Vance?
Well, after our last board meeting, I also attended the district AMC district meeting. On Monday, the seventeenth, I attended the, when Representative Finstead was here, work session on the eighteenth, a RAC on the twentieth, and I guess that's it.
You went to the township meeting.
I went to the township meeting. Forgot about the township meeting. Oh, that's down for township meeting on the twentieth. Did stop out at the dam yesterday and took a look at that last night, so that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you, Vance. Mark?
Okay, yep, and on June eleventh, did have a joint ditch meeting, thirty-six and twenty-four, and then the Wednesday, June twelfth, had MICA, that was online, and then Friday, June fourteenth, did an AMC district meeting. Monday, then of course, as still been mentioned, we did meet with Congressman Finstead, and then work session was on eighteenth, June, and I did have MAPLE tip, transportation improvement project, I just wanted to see that. That was on Thursday, the twentieth, and then, of course, our meeting yesterday, emergency board meeting, and that does conclude my report.
Mr. Chair. All right, thank you, Mark. Other than the things that have already been mentioned, Kevin and I had a couple joint drainage meetings after our county board meeting last time, and then we had met with the planning and zoning staff, and then I was also at the county board work session, a couple appointments after that, had our Blueworth County Association of Counties, was also attended that, the meeting yesterday, the trip out to the dam, and then spent a little bit of time over in St. Clair over the weekend, helping them monitor, I'm not helping, I was just over there seeing what was going on, and it was nice to see that not happen, but unfortunately, we had the rapid end dam issue, so. That is all I have for my report. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to recess.
Will you make that motion?
I'll second that. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are recessed. Thank you, everyone.